I'd like to bring this meeting to the school committee. I'd call it good to join your meeting, please.
I want to welcome those in attendance and welcome our viewers on television. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda this evening is, is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the school committee? I'm not seeing any hands, so I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is to get reports from our student representatives, and we will start with North.
Good evening. We are beginning March with many exciting news and announcements. First off, March 6th will mark the halfway point of the third term. The school is encouraging all students to check their ASME accounts to stay up with their current grades. The MCAS ELA testing will be on Tuesday, March 24th, and Wednesday, March 25th. The make-up date will be on Thursday, March 26th. There will be a class meeting for all sophomores to prep and ease their anxiety for the test during K Block on Monday. The honors breakfast for students that received high honors and honors during the second term will be held on Thursday, March 12th. Seniors were notified that there will be an MEFAs after the acceptance seminar on Monday, 23rd. The Plymouth-Norts Student Council will be hosting the Spring Craft Fair on Saturday, March 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Next week, March 9th starts March Madness, where students will enjoy activities all week after school with kickball, dodgeball, and volleyball, also concurring with Spirit Week throughout the school day from Monday till Friday. Speaking of school spirit, Plymouth-Norts' production of The Addams Family will be Friday, March 13th at 7:00 p.m., and Saturday, March 14th, 7:00 p.m. as well. Tickets are available at pnhs-drama.com or at the door for $10. Over the past week, North has had many great achievements by our very students. First off, Olivia Free was chosen as Poetry at Love finalist at yesterday's regional competition on Cape Cod. She now goes on to compete in the state Poetry at Love finals next weekend in Boston. Second, Skills USA had had amazing success at their regional competition. Students won gold medals in health knowledge, masonry, painting, and design technology with a total of 10 medals in all areas. Nursing assistant in silver was Riley Bassett. Basic healthcare in gold was Kayla Rippon. Medical terminology in bronze was Emma George. First aid CPR in bronze was Nicole Howe. In painting, technology, design, gold was Brian Lewis. Silver was Scott Peterson. Bronze was Mackenzie Whiting. In masonry, gold was Jonathan Dyer. Silver was Colin Brown. And bronze was Eric Pettoni. Lastly, 63 students qualified to compete at the State DECA competition at the Heinz Convention Center in Boston last weekend against a total of 3,400 students statewide. 19 of our students placed with a top 10 in their category, and 10 were at the top 5 and qualified to move on to the international competition in Nashville. Hannah Gleason was a George Berg Scholarship recipient. For the gold level recertification, School-Based Enterprise was Keenan Johnson and Bobby Murray. Second place was in automotive services marketing, and in first place, medallion in role-play was Chloe Cronin. Third place in community awareness were Brooke Poffin, Natalie Kern, and Brooke Wetherell, plus first-place medallion for written portion. Fourth place in startup business plan was Nolan Liskoff. Fifth place in food marketing was Bobby Murray. And lastly, Sophia Reed and Alana Coffin won in travel and tourism team and also earned a third-place medallion in role-play. Finally, later this week, several students, including myself, will be attending the Spring MAS-C Hyannis Conference on Cape for three days. I'm really excited to reconnect with many of my friends from other councils over Massachusetts and enjoy the next few days getting more leadership experiences. The students have lots of homework to make up from the competitions and conferences. I know I will, but North will keep us busy for sure. Thank you.
Just before we start, South, I want to welcome the boys from Troop 9 who are here this evening. Thank you for coming. What we're hearing now is from our student representatives. We just heard from Plymouth-North, now we're going to hear from Plymouth-South.
Hello, everyone. So, we had Skills and DECA this weekend, too, and I'm going to read off the names of the winners. So, for Skills, bronze medals were Matty Dupree in advertising design, Jason Davis in commercial baking, Anthony Smith in diesel equipment, Matt Bean in electrical wiring, Jacob LaCos- oh, sorry, HVAC, John Lawrence in industrial motor control, Victoria Travnik in a medical assisting, Victoria Vincent in sheet metal. And then our silver medal and state qualifiers was a team of two, Libby, Jacob Libby and Lindsay Weber for 3D visual and animation, and then another team of Ian Hall and Connor Steer for additive manufacturing, and then another team of Ian, nope, Nico Regus and Bailey Hagan for digital cinema production, and then Evie Malios for aesthetics, Matt Shepard for industrial motor control, and Alyssa Bray for sheet metal. And then our gold medal and state qualifiers are Raymond Bergeron from automotive services, Alexis Home from cosmetology, over 500 hours, Eddie Savoy for electrical wiring, and Cameron, I'm not going to pretend I know how to say his last name, telecommunications and cabling. Then for DECA winners, we have Emma Chiketti, who got a gold medal for School-Based Enterprise and is qualifying for Nationals, which is in Nashville, Tennessee. And then Aiden Mannion was a finalist in human resource management. Lily Christian and Emma Pollak were finalists in integrated marketing campaign, Abby Nighting first-place medal in marketing and communication. And then, as you know, we don't have school tomorrow, which is really exciting for most seniors because they get to vote. I can't vote yet, so it's fine. And then, so, our meet-the-coaches for spring sports is March 4th, and spring sports will start March 16th. March 5th, we have a staff versus students basketball game at 2:30. And our spring annual student council conference takes place this week, the 4th to 7th, in Hyannis. MCAS ELA and math retesting will start this week as well. March 6th is the third-term midpoint. March 13th, we have Mr. Plymouth-South. March 15th is the deadline for caps and gowns, and this Friday is our MIAA High School Captain's Workshop, and we will be sending delegates with coaches.
A great deal of information from both of you. Thank you so much. I can't believe you're talking about caps and gowns.
I know.
Okay. We have a school improvement plan. Dr. Mastis?
Yes, tonight, we have the Plymouth-South Middle School School Council under the direction of interim principal Joe Murphy, and they are here to present the school improvement annual action plan for year one. So, I want to welcome them to the table, and please make yourself at home.
Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us. Excited about our plan. New year, new leadership, a lot of changes going on down in Plymouth-South Middle School and planning for the future, so that's what we're all about tonight. We're going to share that with you. And as we move through the presentation, please ask your questions if you have them, and we'll do the very best we can to answer them. So, I'm Joe Murphy. I'm the interim principal down at Plymouth-South Middle School.
Hi, I'm Andy Loretz. I'm the band and orchestra teacher down at South Middle School.
I'm Melzy Gania, and I'm one of the assistant principals.
And I'm Melissa Morris. I have a 6th and 7th grader at Plymouth-South Middle School.
So, there's two folks that served on our school council who are not with us tonight. I just want to say thank you for their service. Amy Ring is one of our teachers. She was unable to be with us tonight, and Jody Reese is a parent of one of our students who also has been meeting to help us craft this plan for this year. So, let's just move forward, and we'll get into this. I think we'll start by just highlighting our mission. I think the main emphasis here is that I think we really truly do believe that there should be an emphasis on continuing to grow. Students continuing to grow, teachers continuing to grow, and we really believe that all kids can, all the teachers will, and if we're always growing, we're always learning, we're always improving, I think at the end of child's time at PSMS, they're going to be ready for high school and the world beyond. That's what we believe. That's our mission. And our vision, in terms of, so where does that lead us in the future, is that we're developing kids that have great citizenship skills, that are well-rounded, that are problem-solvers, that have good collaboration skills. And so, as they go off into the world, whether it's high school or some other place beyond that, that they have all those skills that they need to pursue whatever they desire. We don't want PSMS to be the reason why they're not able to achieve their dreams. Moving on to the next slide. We do have a three-year plan, and, oh, do we have a remote? We do have a three-year plan, and under new leadership, we have, this is the plan. We are in year one, and so tonight, as we talk about our objectives and the goals that we've set for ourselves and those action items, we can speak to where we are with some of these things that have already been started and they're in place, and other things will continue to happen as we move through the three years. So, our theory of action is that I think that we really do believe that it will provide a safe, supportive environment for our kids. We're effectively communicating with the teachers, parents, and all the stakeholders of the school system and PSMS, and we're asking our teachers to reflect on their teaching practices. If we're doing all those things, we're doing them well, and we're doing them consistently over the course of three years, then we're going to be successful in getting those students where we want them to be. So, here are our objectives. We have three of them. The first one is focused around social and emotional growth and health and welfare and wellbeing. We want to increase the family and community engagement down at South Middle, and I can say, speaking of history, my previous experiences, I think that this is a particular challenge for us. We have a geographical component that has proven challenging in the past. We have families that they drive 40 minutes to get to school. Sometimes the kids are on the bus for 15 minutes, and when we ask them to come and be part of the school community to attend an event during the middle, people are tired, and it's tough. And so, we have to look for those best opportunities, but we also have to look for those opportunities that are worth a while, and people want to come out of their house, they want to come out of the school, and they want to be a part of the school community. We're going to work at that, but historically, it's been a challenge down at South Middle School. And finally, to enhance the academic achievement for all of our students, which I think is the primary reason why we have this school, right, to educate our kids. So, our first goal centers around student social and emotional growth and health. We want to be cognizant of the way that our kids are feeling as a group individually, and if they're feeling safe and they're feeling welcome, we know that they can put their best foot forward, and hopefully their academic performance increases. We want to be cognizant of the staff and keeping them well-trained on best practices to help them get the kids feeling that way, help. And also, hopefully, if the staff have that kind of training and they're motivating the students, there's a good student-teacher connection that's made for every kid. Hopefully, every kid's able to connect with multiple staff members, and that motivates the students to want to do some of that hard work and thinking that we're asking them. So, that's our first goal. I'm going to turn it over to Andy. He's going to speak to that first goal.
All right. So, hi again. My name is Andy Loretz. I'm a middle school band and orchestra teacher. So, our first action item regarding that goal is to provide students with educational opportunities on identifying and positively dealing with middle school stressors. So, in a moment, we're going to talk about how our SEL program is designed to help with that, but just so you know that we also have initiatives coming this spring for each of the grades to help deal with stressors that are common for middle school students. So, our 6th graders are going to receive a drug story theater production. These are social stories that are presented in theater form that talk about the issues of drugs going on in our communities and are unfortunately too prevalent for many of these students. So, how to deal with them, how to deal with the peer pressure that goes along with them, how to deal with family issues that might occur. Our 7th graders are going to be seeing a film called Angst that we were able to collaborate with the PYDC in order to show them. It deals with anxiety and students coping with that, how to cope with the stress that comes with just everyday life as being a middle school student. And our 8th graders will receive a presentation by Corey's Cause. This is a foundation that is based off of a family that went through significant trauma and had significant injuries to one of their family members, and showed through this process that that isn't the end of the story, but the rest of the story is about how you overcome your life hurdles and your obstacles, and how you make the lemon out of the lemonade in your life, so being resilient as well. So, all of those are coming this spring to our students. Our next action item is that in conjunction with our Gosnold and South Bay counselors, we will provide students needed weekly counseling services as deemed necessary, and this is ongoing. This has been going on for a little while now, and I, as a teacher, having students pulled from my class every once in a while to receive these counseling services, I couldn't be happier. And that sounds weird when you're having a student pulled from your class. You always want to keep your students in your class as much as possible to give them the academic content that they need. But that being said, I know that some students are coming into my classroom dealing with significant issues like trauma, adverse childhood experiences, and we need to provide for those students. I have one student in particular that I have in mind who has a lot going on at home, and I can see it on their face when they come into my classroom. And having been through this at the start of the year and going all the way through, now I'm seeing a change in those students' behavior and pattern of thought. They're becoming more aware of their thinking. They're growing into basically the best selves that I've seen them in a long time. So, we're trying to educate the whole child about how to use mental health in a way that brings them to a higher place. Our next action item is to provide teachers with ongoing professional development to learn about the benefits of social emotional learning, SEL, and, oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much, and best practices to incorporate those practices into their regular instructional teaching. So, again, our SEL program, it's been a slow rollout. As a teacher, I can say that I really find the way that we're doing this beneficial because it's not just a one-and-done sort of experience. Throughout the whole year, we've had our PD geared towards social emotional learning so that we can really feel like, as educators, we're providing our students with how to deal with emotions, how to be more self-aware, more cooperative and collaborative, how to take on these things that, again, aren't just about their academics, but about the whole child. What I also really like as the music teacher is that it's not just, okay, you're doing this in social studies class, but everyone else is learning about it, just for the sake of sitting in a seat. We are learning how all of us, all teachers of all content areas, can deliver this instruction and education to our students, and I find that really valuable, not just to us as teachers, but I'm really seeing the difference in the students and their, how well-informed they are with themselves and their own social and emotional learning. Our next action item is that with the support of teaching staff, we're going to form an LGBTQ club that provides a safe space for students and opportunities to express themselves while teaching tolerance and respect. Currently, this club is not yet functioning. It was last year. There are plans to bring it back. Unfortunately, there's been a changeover with it, so we really are striving to make sure that next year it is hitting the ground running. And what I loved about it last year was that it wasn't just a club for students who are LGBTQ or allies. It was about educating their peers about the issues that surround the LGBTQ experience. As a gay educator, I find it really important. I really see that our students are more aware of these issues and that they might not be educated about normally, and it's done in a non-intrusive way. It's just saying that students are students, and we're going to treat everyone with respect regardless. As you can see on the slide, the students made that Safe Zone poster. Teachers were asked if they wanted to put that up, and again, I was really proud to see that there was a Google spreadsheet of who wanted one, and pretty much our whole staff said, yeah, get me one, get me one as soon as possible. So, it's another example of just students taking the lead to make a more inclusive environment for everyone. Our next action item is that we will institute prevention screening to our 8th grade students and identify those students with an escalated proclivity to targeted subgroups, providing training and intervention to those students to recognize and manage those identified factors. So, again, prevention screening is a test that's given to all 8th grade students unless their parents would like to opt them out of this, and the results of the test are just to show students that you might have certain factors that might be something to think about going forward, not that it's a sentence that you definitely have these certain things, but it's a way of trying to give students tools and knowledge to handle them. So, these factors that the test screens for are anxiety, sensation-seeking, negative thinking, and impulsivity. And again, it's to give the students knowledge of, you might not be anxious right now. You just have an elevated risk for it, and we're going to be proactive about it. We're going to talk to you about coping mechanisms, how to handle that sort of thinking, how to get in touch with people like counselors if you need to, if you feel like that's a step you want to take, and it's a really good program that's going to help our students in a proactive way. Our next action item is to promote service learning opportunities in all grades through the support and guidance of social studies teachers. As a town meeting member, I got the chance to speak to all of the 8th grade last year about what was going on with town meeting. What is town meeting? What is your form of government? So, that was a great area of cross-curricular collaboration, being a music person, and I think students definitely benefited from that as well. We currently have a community garden. This is not just for all students, but especially targets students in our self-contained special-needs classes, as well as students in the general population, and it's a great way for students kind of working together, showing how we can build a better, you know, a better society through small things like that. And specifically in civics, we had a vaping and marketing program to enact small but local change. That was done through Mrs. Fitzgerald's class. Another thing that Mrs. Fitzgerald's class is doing is students identified an issue that they thought was important to them, and that issue this year happened to be that there was a particular intersection that was dangerous, and a lot of people have had accidents there, so they would like to install a traffic stoplight. So, now we're working with town meeting to see what we can do about that, and the students, again, are taking the lead on that. So, it's teaching them how to be good citizens and engaged in their community. Our next action item is to collaborate with members of the PPS diversity committee, I'm sorry, committee, to plan school-based and/or district-wide events to educate students and staff to promote tolerance. So, PSMS is starting to work with the diversity committee. It's nation, so that's ongoing, but the foreign language department in particular has been really good about highlighting diversity and the importance of teaching diversity. They brought in a group called Nuestros Pequeños en Manos. They did an assembly this past fall, and this group is a musical group that is from Mexico and Latin American countries, impoverished people who are using this as a tool to get out of that poverty, as a way to see the world as well, and to make an impact for their community. So, our students were exposed to this cultural program. Foreign language also has field trips that are going to Costa Rica and to Quebec. So, again, it's about teaching students that they're global citizens, that there is a world outside of the world that they know, that there are other people who may look differently and act differently and be different, whatever, which is really great for all of our students to see and to get to know. Our next action item is about teacher-nominated students' awards for exhibiting personal growth and/or awareness in areas of social emotional learning, as well as castle awards. So, these are awards that are given out during the honors breakfasts, and they're not just highlighting students' grades, which is usually what honors breakfasts are all about, but they're talking about those everyday things that tie into our SEL and to our castle wheel that all of our teachers have posted in our classrooms. So, actually, if you wanted to make a comment on that.
So, this is something that we've already got going in off the ground. So, at our first honor celebration of the year, I had done some work asking the teachers to keep this top of mind if we're going to try to have, we're going to have this sort of training, we're going to try to weave this kind of instruction into our daily practice. Those kids that are really taking that mantle and running with it, we should really be honoring. And so, as part of our honor celebration, the teachers nominated kids that they thought were either were just naturally good at this and they were really good peer role models, or were showing a lot of effort or growth in some of these areas. And the reason why it's worth mentioning is because for myself, I got a lot of conversational feedback from families at our honors celebration. I got, people wrote me actual old-school letters, and I got emails, and it was all positive feedback, and I think the general sentiment for most of it was like, thank you for shining the spotlight. Thank you for the PSMS staff shining the spotlight on the whole child. It's good. We want our kids to learn to be problem solvers. We want them to be literate, but really, we want them to be good people. We want them to be hard-working. We want them to be respectful of others because those are things that are just as important and are going to serve them well later in life, and it was really nice feedback, and I've been trying to do the best I can to share some of that with the staff, and we will continue to do that because I think it brings it to light and it makes it more worthwhile for them, and they really sit down and think about, who are those kids that we want to shine the light on? So, here you are.
Thank you. And our last action item is about increased sense of school pride by rebranding PSMS, promotion of school colors, mascot, and upgrading facilities where possible. And I have to say that from day one of this school year, that was one of the bigger changes that we saw, just right off the bat, when you walk into the building, as you can see in some of these photos, the big PSMS Jaguars, huge rug. We also, over the summer, created a mural in the gym, as well as painted the floor and updated the gym, and it's just that sense of pride when you walk into the building as a teacher, faculty, staff, student, that there's a sense of place, and I think that's really important for our students. Recently, the art club has taken it on themselves to make more murals, again, right in that main foyer. The art club made that awesome Jaguar breaking out of the wall, and they've also created another mural a little bit down the way that also, again, is part of school colors and school pride, and it's those small things that make a big impact. Some things that you might not see or think about, right, are those maintenance items, but again, not just maintenance, but upgrading things. So, for instance, in the library, we have brand-new chairs, again, small, but it makes a big difference that you're sitting on a chair that you can actually sit in and it's not going to break. In the cafeteria, we have a new PA system, as well as a projector, which is great for the announcements. We give a lot of announcements to students during lunch, but also now, rather than us, you know, saying everything that can view certain announcements on that screen. In the gym, we also have a new projector and screen, and these are great for things that also develop school spirit, such as our pep rallies. So, again, all of this is a good use of our funds to be put back into the school to make sure that we're not only maintaining the building, but that the students feel like this is a home, this is the place where I can learn and exist and feel safe and comfortable. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Andy. Let's move on to Goal 2. So, Goal 2 is about increasing family and community engagement. Just briefly, like personally, I think that the whole concept of the school communicating with families consistently and reliably is very important. When I say reliably, I'm talking about the frequency that we communicate. I'm also talking about the time, the time of the week, the time of the day. It's, we've got to a certain point in this school year now where I think there's certain communications that are going out, and when they don't happen, it's distracting attention, which is a good thing because that means people are looking for it. I think having well-informed families really allows for opportunities for their community engagement to go up. If folks know that there's something going on down at PSMS ahead of time, they can put it on their family calendars and try to make it a priority. They're not going to make every single event, but if they can make some events more than they've had before in the past, because we've done a good job planning and communicating, I think that that's one of the things we need to do to get people more invested in coming down to the school. And finally, learning more about the community's wants and needs of the school. We've already began some of the work of doing some of that this year, and if there- began some of the work of doing some of that this year, and if there are things that the folks down in South Bend feel like we need to do to create a more collaborative school community, and it's within our means to do it, I think it's our job to do that. And so I'm gonna pass it over to Melissa. Melissa's one of our parents, she's gonna talk to you about our second goal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Again, my name's Melissa Morse, and again, I'm a parent. I think one of the best ways to get involved is be a part of the PTA or sit on school council, so that you behind you know what's going on, and you can bring ideas, you know. So I think it's really important, one of our first initiatives is to grow the school council membership by forty or more percent. So it's really great, the beginning of the school year, the sixth grade open house, the PTA is there, they usually at that point already have their PTA meetings, the date's already established, so it's a great way for parents to learn a little bit about what the PTA does, but then be able to put it, fit it into their schedule. Parents have busy lives, just as we all have busy lives, so that's really important. New families coming into the school, excuse me, the school system, we want to have a paper that gives a little bit of more information about what the PTA does, what its role is, and also what the school council is. Mr. Murphy has a newsletter that he sends out every Friday, which I'll talk a little bit more about, but on that it says, you know, it gives the times, it's a constant reminder for parents, guardians, to get involved. So I think that's, it's something that we need to work on, as you said about the demographics, you know, people being far away, but if they have those dates out there, and we even spoke about even having the agenda put out the week before, so if there's something on the agenda that somebody is passionate about or wants to share, they have an idea, that they can come and stop in and bring their concerns or their ideas to the table. If you look at the, above the board, we have some pictures up there, the one on the left. So that's Ms. Spicer with two students, and there, she works with the Peer Helper Program. So she took a group of students to Bridgewater State for the MARK program, which I'm sure you're familiar with, Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. So these students are in a leadership role where they're learning about anti-bullying, what can they, what can they do to stick up for somebody or make the school a safer place? So one of the things they want to do, which I think is a great idea, is taking what these students have learned alongside their teachers, and improving the school's safety, what they see going on, what they can do to change things, so they're working, not just the leadership group themselves, not just the peer helpers, but working alongside their teachers as well, to make the school a safer place, which I think is great as well. If you look on the right side, there is a teacher there and a student. This student had a great idea that she was interested in skiing, she wanted to do a ski trip, so she was talking to her teacher about it, and her teacher said, well, all right, this is a good idea, let's go talk to Mr. Murphy and administration about it. So this was a great example of leadership skills in the making. They talked about this trip, they actually last week went to Blue Hills, had a successful ski trip, and this week they're going to Waukesha. There has been a lot of interest, so they most likely next year will have a ski club. So again, this second initiative of forming student leadership committees to meet with administration, there's many ways that we can do that, students have many ideas, and if they have an idea and they know that their voice is going to be heard, you know, this is how new ideas are, you know, you don't know what student has this great idea that could change any aspect of school. So working together, leadership skills, definitely one of our initiatives that we want to...
I think it's worth mentioning too, in that particular, that particular example, there's a small group of parents that, and no fault of their own, I don't know that they were very heavy traffic parents coming into the school, but because their child took a real interest in this, and leadership role, because it's not just that one particular student up there, the families have been in contact with the secretaries, myself, with the P E teachers, and we know each other now. It's wonderful, and they were very helpful in helping to make that, that trip come to life, this next one come to life, and they're participating, they're coming and they're chaperoning, and so, you know, all of that comes back to listening, listening to the staff, listening to the kids, listen to the parents, and so the whole theme, I think, of all this is putting it out there, what do you want, what do you need, what are we able to do, and where those opportunities lay, like, we make them happen, and we use them as a teachable moment. Like, this particular student is, she's very high achieving, but in terms of putting together a field trip, going off-campus with a teacher, she had to do a lot of that work herself, and I think she's, she's learned a lot of those soft skills that she's gonna need as she grows up, and she'll feel more empowered to organize, to lead, and to run things moving forward in the future. For me, it's really exciting in a lot of different ways.
Excellent, thank you. So our next initiative is to increase digital communication, especially on social media. I feel like Plumas South Middle does a great job at this, obviously, we can continue to work at it, but I feel like Mr. Murphy and administration and staff, teachers do a great job at this. I'm gonna touch base again on this newsletter that goes out on Friday afternoons, which is excellent. It started off the school year, it had about eight hundred to nine hundred views, which is great that you can actually see how many people are viewing it. And since then, there's over thirteen hundred people that look to this email. So in this email, I, as a parent, looked for it as well, because you only hear a little bit about what your, what your student's seeing in their classroom, but it gives a kind of a summary, an outline of what's going on at Plumas South Middle. It might, it takes time to put it together, but it's excellent for parents to know what's going on. So it can be from sixth, seventh, eighth grade, what's going on in their, in their history class, what are they doing in English, what are they doing in science, and there's a brief summary of what's going on, and there's usually a picture that goes along with it. There's achievements there as well, so sometimes there'll be athlete of the week, there is musician of the month, so it could be a chorus member, it could be a strings, a band member, some type of achievement that they have, you know, succeeded, or they have great effort, they have good character, whatever it might be, that there's a little shout-out to them. There's also reminders on there, so for example, on Friday, there was a reminder about Mary Poppins, the production of Mary Poppins will be going on this coming Friday and Saturday, and there's the link that shows this is how you can order tickets, there's no tickets sold at the door. So there's a lot of ways that we're, that the school keeps in contact with the, with the parents, which I think is excellent. We did do a parent survey, so the school council came up with a parent survey, as we were thinking about what is, what's most important to parents for this plan as we look forward. So we really wanted to find out, how should we be contacting them, how can we get them involved, how can we get, what is the best way for us to give them information? So we, the information that we received or the data we collected was email, parents liked having an email, they liked the newsletter, they looked for that newsletter, and then Facebook. So we have a Plumas South Middle Facebook, which I think is wonderful, you know, if, for example, basketball Bonanza just happened this past Friday, so there was a reminder about it, and the tickets were being sold for five dollars. So Facebook, the PTA has a Facebook before I came here, there was a reminder that there was a six P M. meeting, so it's another way that we're reaching out to parents, and it's really important. In regards to our staff or teachers, remind Blooms apps that they're using to stay connected. My sixth grader came home last week, and every day I get a Blooms notification of what they've done in school, which I think is awesome. You can see what their homework is, you can see what the, you know, in the next week, what their tests are. So I said, oh, so you have a quiz in science, or I can't remember now what it was, but you have a quiz, and she's like, no, we don't have a quiz, we haven't finished those notes yet. She's like, no. So I was like, really? I'm like, I haven't used this yet, let me text the teacher via this app. So I just reached out, within ten, fifteen minutes, there was a response back, yes, there's a quiz, but there, it's an open note quiz, and we're finishing those notes in class prior to the quiz. So for a sixth grader that was, you know, a little bit getting like, a little concerned, oh my gosh, there's this quiz, it was excellent to have that communication. I'd never have had to use it before, but to have it there, and then know what's going on in the classroom is excellent. So these apps can be used for some wonderful things. Support and collaborate, collaboration with the PTA to increase student opportunities. The PTA does a great job of helping fundraise, a lot of their money, half of it can be used usually to help with the school, to defray costs. For example, the basketball Bonanza just went on, and half, they made a good amount of money, so half of that will go to the athletics, half of it will go to the PTA, which they do help with field trips, or getting new uniforms, whatever it might be. So really, the thing, to keep that growing, we really would like the PTA to look at going to, at the elementary level. Towards the end of the school year, they go to that last PTA meeting and reach out and say, there are ways that you can still get involved in, at the middle school level. So just, you know, having maybe a face and a name, so that they'll look for it and be more apt to be involved in middle school. And then, moving on to our next slide, is provide staff with time to provide targeted written feedback to students and families in areas of growth and positive feedback. So I feel like probably teachers spend a lot of their time, if they're, they, you know, have, they don't have a lot of time, so they're gonna reach out when, you know, maybe there's a negative issue or something going on. What about, you know, just knowing that your kid is, you know, helps others, or that they have really good effort, or they, you know, did this nice, you know, act of kindness to their fellow classmates? So Mr. Murphy, excuse me, Mr. Murphy and the group here talked about maybe doing some type of postcard. So giving teachers the time to actually do that, take the first five minutes of the staff meeting, or the last five minutes, and address this postcard to a student that you may not have normally, you know, sent out a message to, and give some positive feedback that, you know, parents like that, and I think it's, that's important as well.
I'd argue that no news is good news, that whole attitude, no news is no news. And there's just, there's just a lot of really wonderful kids that go to our school, and that probably could be said of all the schools, and I think it's important, particularly at this time, if I'm asking the staff, and the school council's helping me create a plan where we're putting folks in on social, emotional learning and growth, that we need to recognize that. And you can do almost anything if you make it a priority, I think this has to be something that we prioritize. It's not, it's very easy to get caught up in the day-to-day operations, and it's the end of the school day, you go home, you reset, and come back tomorrow, and it does become part of your normal, regular practice, and it's something that educators talk about a ton, and I don't know if they ever actually always do it. So I figured if we put it into our plan, we have to do it, and that's a good positive pressure on us to make sure that happens.
All right, and then our create want and need survey, so the school council here, we created a parent survey, and we sent it out, we wanted to get some feedback about academics, about safety, about communication, so how we can make all of those things better, which we got some great feedback. Surveys are wonderful, you can hear right from the parents or guardians what they think is good and what they think we need to work on. So we learned a lot from that, that was great information to take with us. The students then did the same, so the peer helpers wrote a survey for the students to take, and they received feedback, feedback as well. And then looking forward, the goal is to do a staff one as well, to see what the needs of staff are, what they, what they need to be supported, what they think they're doing great at, and what they need to work on. So once we have all of these together, then they, we can continue and create an action plan, a plan of change. And then lastly, for this goal, so to expand the role of the Student Resource Officer at PSMs. So we think that really the School Resource Officer needs to be more visible, in the morning, at the end of the day, make them more visible throughout the day. We thought about even in health classes, that it would be great for, whether it be as a guest, or even speaking about drugs and alcohol use. So taking them, they have a lot of knowledge and experience that they can share, and it's not just their teacher sharing it, but it's another professional as well. There used to be the Junior Police Academy, many years ago, they used to have that in place, so we think it would be a great idea to even bring that back. As a vocational technical education teacher, I think it's never too early to expose them to other career paths, so I think this would be a great opportunity for the Resource Officer to, you know, be involved in the community as well. And then, lastly, we have Alice up there, which will be implemented here in March, so Plumas South Middle School's worked collaboratively, as you know, with the police department, to implement a program that's age-appropriate for our middle school, because ultimately our goal is to, you all want our students safe, and we want our children safe, so. Do you have anything else that I, you could add on?
No, I just think that the role of the Alice program has been, works for a long time, there's been some really good collaboration, I think, between the school system and the police department, and we're just about there. Plumas North Middle has, of all secondary schools, they will have their first drill this month, and as, as will the rest of the secondary schools, and I think we've done that practice, we've got the training from the police department, we've done the practice with the staff, and now it's time to start looking at, how do we do this with kids? And the approach that we've taken has been collaborative with the department, they're really well-versed on best practices out there in terms of rolling out a new format and keeping in consideration kids that have adverse trauma in their background, being sensitive to that, and so it's taken some time, and we're just about there, and I'm sure we'll continue to collaborate, we're gonna learn, we'll learn in how this goes, like anything else in life, and it's the first time we're gonna do it. There may be some problems, we will learn from that, the police department will observe and give us feedback, and we'll tighten up and we'll get better. That brings us to goal three. Our final goal is about enhancing the achievement of all students. I think the role of data in our school is a big factor in all of this. One of the things that we need to do is continue to use data to look at those low-performing areas. We do some really, some things really well down at South Bend Middle School, and we have a track record of some of that, but there are some areas that we can improve on, and we'll talk about those, and we've got a plan in place to try to come to that and get those above, and move some of those roots of kids and those, took those students forward. And not just talk about student performance, but how do we get the teachers there in their educational practice and their teaching to help make that shift? Ultimately, we do that, and we do it well, and like, it takes several years, we should see if we grow within our student achievement. Mr. Kane, I was gonna talk about that.
So, what we start with first is a few graphs from our NCAS data. So the first one we have here is academic performance ELA for all students that have tested. You can see a lot of different columns here, the one that we are looking at primarily here is meeting and exceeding, the percentage, which is pretty important, to see the number of people that are meeting and exceeding, but we still have some work to do with our partial meeting and our non-meeting, so it's an area to focus on. Economically disadvantaged students, same area, ELA, you can see that there's definitely a dip in these numbers, strong, I feel like there's a strong green, which is the partial meeting, that we really need to focus on, we can do to get those students, the percentage of meeting percentage. And then students with disabilities, this is a considerable dip. But once again, looking at the partial meeting, I feel like that is an area of focus, if you can focus with those students and try and get them into the meeting percentage, I believe that would be a benefit.
We have a fairly, I would say, between these two subgroups that are on the low-performing side, we have a lot of students within those subgroups who fall under those categories, who they are high-needs kids, because they are economically challenged, and they may have special education, and so that makes the education of those kids challenging, because they have, they have a diverse amount of needs, but if that's where we place our focus, and we have positive results, we have positive results sort of across, across the board with our performance data, which, that's nice, I'm more concerned about the fact that they will talk to them with a positive impact on children. And so, a positive impact on some of these kids that maybe have home situations that are challenging enough, so we need to figure out how we help them perform well in school so that they can break out of that as they grow and develop, and they have better opportunities. I think when we look at the math data, and just what we're gonna find is very... similar, the trend with math is fairly decent math scores, not as high as ELA, that's been a tracker down at some middle school, but these two subgroups in particular are a challenge. That's our challenge.
So next we have the math scores for all students. Pretty self-explanatory, again, very similar to all students in ELA. There is a slight dip in our math numbers compared to our ELA numbers, which is a focus that we're... Once again, disadvantaged students, still another substantial dip, and our students who have exceeded, who are in the middle of that area, area of focus.
I personally am bothered by that. I grew up in an economically disadvantaged household, and I just, it's beyond me why we don't have any kids that are in an economically disadvantaged situation that aren't high-performing middle students. We need to fix that. We need to work on that, and we gotta target those kids, because I don't think that that should be indicative of whether or not you are a good master, when you have math data builders. And so we have to look at that, we have to dig deeper, and we have to look at our instructional practices and target those population of kids, because the talent's there, we gotta pull it out.
And finally, students with disabilities, very similar to the ELA, what Mr. Murphy spoke about, a considerable dip as well.
How do we get them, Mr. Gaynor?
So, first area we have is exploring middle school scheduling options for the future. Right now, we currently have a seventh period day at Plumis South Middle School, forty-nine minute periods. One of our grades, the seventh grade in particular, had fourteen classes for the year that they are required to take, which we feel is very high. So those are, that, that, those are all considerable things that are concerning for us. We're looking to add a length to each period, and possibly shorten the number of periods that students are having in a day, just to help with instruction and take the burden off the student at school, you know, going through seventy different classes routinely every day, which can be, can be a lot of work to do there. The next area we have is embedded curriculum time into the school, school week for our teachers. This is actually terrific, you know, every single subject has weekly time that they will meet with their coworkers, so science means math means, all the subjects mean. Specifically, the last, sorry. So, right now, math is working with Big Ideas, which is the new curriculum that they're rolling out. ELA is working with Lucy Coffins, which is a workshop model, and social studies, the shift that they're having right now is, curriculum that was once solely taught in sixth grade and seventh grade has been mine, so it's being, the ancient CIV and NGO is, is being divvied up among sixth and seventh. So it's definitely been different for our social studies teachers, and they are, they have shown great strides in the curriculum with that. And also we have, for our science, we have the Open Science Ed, which we are modeling this year. It's a pilot that is, I'll be honest, our science teachers are very excited about it. They're, they will admit it's a lot of work. They had a lot of work over the summer to prepare for this, and they're still preparing. And as you can see in this picture, we have Allison Merin, who is the science coordinator. She actually takes a trip down to Plumis South Middle School with the science teachers we're getting, and works through these labs, and works through the curriculum that they're delivering. It, it's definitely helped, and, you know, it just shows that the relationship at the top is really wanting to be successful. In addition to that, the DESD has come to our school to visit, see us roll this out, and, you know, what successes we've had, and what are our concerns, and that's, that's just the, the type of work that they're putting in. And on March twelfth, there's an admin from across the state that will be coming to Plumis South Middle to talk to the students and teachers about the science curriculum.
Curriculum changes are a tremendous amount of work. Teachers are human beings, just like the children are, and, you know, they get used to what they teach, and they get comfortable with it. When we ask them to make some of those changes, it can be perceived as additional work. And that's not a very good place to be in education, when we make those shifts, and we make those changes, and we work with Dr. Campbell and the coordinators, it probably is because there's better ways of doing it that are earlier. And when we adopt them, they would not be adopted well unless we provide the teachers with the time and support to do that. And in fact, I specifically put Allison Merin in there, she has been exemplary in terms of providing the training to the teachers, and coming down to PSMS regularly, and making sure that their questions are answered, that they're instituting these lessons well, and providing the teachers with formal and informal feedback. And when I talk to her, she's involved at the science level across the state. This isn't going well, where they're piloting it in some other schools, but down at the PSMS, and I think a lot of it is attributed to her. The ability that we have to have post-traffic in the scope of the school days, and support from teachers, that is going very well. So much so that she, some of these panels that she's on, she's going back, she has all this positive feedback, and a lot of communities, they're, they're running up against it, and they're having difficulty. And they've asked her, can we come down to Plumis South Middle School and see what's going on? And I know one of the, the takeaways they're going to have is, the curriculum time that we have embedded into the teacher's schedule, and Allison's willingness to go down and support them. I think at the building level, people at, Mr. Gaynor, our administrative team do a good job, saying, we need something to tell us, and they do, and we try to get it in places so much we can. And so, it's exciting, because we're piloting this. It's exciting, because it's been successful. And it's really, it's a really hard change, it's a very comprehensive curriculum, and if we can do it in science, why can't we do it elsewhere? We need to look, and we need to ask, how we continue to make those opportunities happen across all curriculum areas. And so, that's, she was specifically put in there, because she has done a wonderful job supporting the teachers as far as this.
So the next area we have is social, emotional learning and professional development, and Andy did speak to this briefly, but, I think it was my first year, so I've been at Plumis South Middle for about four years, and it was a partnership with Rising Tide that many teachers got involved with. They were teamed up with a teacher there, going over Rising Tide, and doing some classroom observations, and also Rising Tide was coming to Plumis South Middle. So we do have some early adopters who have really, really taken the social, emotional learning in the castle and ran with it. So this year is really the first year we're rolling this out, which looks to be technically, if you wanna put a number to it, a three-year plan, but this isn't something that we're looking to quit after only three, three years. It's something that we wanna stick with. So, at faculty meetings and in services, we've been, we've been discussing the profession of the social, emotional learning. At our faculty meetings in particular, we've had a window, I know Mr. Murphy spoke about, Mr. Murphy spoke about the postcards that they've been writing, also to highlight some of those early adopters, some of the tools that they're using in the classroom to highlight the social, emotional learning. And one in particular, this just happens to be the same teacher that she was speaking about, but he was displaying a rubric that they were using, and the big, the big takeaway from the rubric was, sixteen points for just content, and more specifically what the assignment was, and then there was twenty points for self-reflection and self-awareness, and like, how they participated in the assignment. I, I will be honest, there was definitely a big conversation that led after that, because there's some teachers that, you know, they see that, and it's, it's, they were wondering, like, why would you offer so many points for this? It, it really speaks to the importance of social, emotional learning, and that, you know, if a student just did the reflection, you're not getting a good grade, you know, they need to do the assignment, but they want, he wanted to show that the actual reflection in this is crucial.
Next, can I, let me make one more comment about that. So there is a little bit of a slow release. And what Andy was saying earlier, it's been nice to kind of go slow at the beginning, that's intentional. There's a, there's, there's a, the, the part of the planning has been that, if the teachers don't understand why this is worthwhile work, and why we want them to make this change, I, I believe they won't do it. And so, this year has really been about, what are some of those best practices? Why do we wanna do this? Because it is additional work to change the way you can teach. And I think next year, we're gonna be taking a look at, what are those concrete practices that you can start weaving into your, into, you know, your lessons? And so, it's, it's about getting buy-in, it's about getting people to believe in what we're talking about, and, but I think sometimes you go a little slow, so that you can go faster, and this would be a, this would be a method.
So we have the continued professional development in curricular areas, through content approaches, and coordinators. So we have two coordinators up there, Mrs. White and...
Kable?
Mr. Kable, sorry. And then we also have Mrs. Benati, she's a math coach at Plumis South Middle School. So, the new curriculum that I discussed earlier obviously factors into this, and we're really looking to make sure we have a vertical alignment with all of our grades, as far as most students pending math, or whatever subject that might be in seventh grade, they are prepared and ready to start eighth grade all seamlessly. And that's a, that's a big focus. We also have some programmatic shifts for the PTA, and also math, pardon. We have some math support classes that we're rolling out in our sixth and seventh grade, and kind of length, going back to the numbers that you saw up there, the ideas to really start with those support classes early. We currently have one just in the seventh grade, but we're looking to have both sixth and seventh grade, and use the data to support which student should be in there, and make sure that their student will be able to use services.
Let me just make a comment about that. I think, like, some of the, some of the programming behind it has been very intentional. We have had a math, which was passed on at PSMS the last several years, and what we've tried to do is target students that are low performing in some areas. And what we've found is that, if we continue to track them after they've gone through this course, when they get into high school, they're no longer low performing students. So we don't necessarily see that payoff at PSMS, and we know that, but when you track them, and you look at how they're performing at some place, typically, they are in intermediate level math, some of them have been on their way up in honors classes. And so in terms of, like, investing in a student beyond the scope of our school, but investing them as a count, we think it's worthwhile, and I thought we'd look for another opportunity about, how do we create a course that exists in sixth grade as well? You know, that's been in conjunction with Kelly Martinez, our math coordinator, we're looking somewhere, figuring out, how do we do that across them? Both of the middle schools, not just Plumis South Middle School. So, there's some history that plays into that, in terms of having kids have success, and so how do we make that success even more prevalent? That's kind of what we're talking about.
The next area we have is ELA and math data team, we target low-performing standards. So once again, the data that we showed in the beginning of Goal Three, that's really going to be tackled by both of our ELA and our math data team. And that's broken up into six, representatives from the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, as well as our literacy coach for the ELA, and our math coach for the math data team. We're really trying to focus on where we're struggling, and what areas we need to improve on. The big thing is any performing, low performing standards, what specifically are, how are they answering the question? Is there something, are they, are they not understanding the question? Is it maybe, have the procedure that they're doing in class maybe they need to adjust or tweak, some of those curriculum things that the teachers are doing? So, we put this team together, and they spend about two to three days working on the data, and trying to find, we don't wanna overwhelm the teachers, but we wanna try and find a couple of strategies that we can pull out of that to improve those scores. And it's, it's been really successful, and we've seen a shift. We have increased academic field trip opportunities across all grades. We spoke about the surveys that were done for parents, students, and also for teachers. And when the school council, when we created the survey for the students, there was a glaring one, I think it was ninety percent of the students wanted more field trips. So...
That just, I can't, I just think, all students want more field trips. We would all agree with that. But what I know, I was laughing, I laughed at first, you, but then I started to sit back and reflect, and I'm thinking, I could go on more field trips. Sometimes we don't want one field trip either. I don't, I don't think that that's a really good experience for a middle school, and I hope you agree with me on that one. And so when they say, yes, we wanna go on more field trips, that, that wasn't surprising, but what it did is it started forcing us to look at, where are we typically going, and how often are we doing it? It needs to be more. And I'm glad that the kids answered it that way, because it started the conversation. So we gotta work on it, and we gotta work on that rubric. Some of that is just giving the teachers the power to say, yes, let's do that. Some of it is motivating the teachers, and that's okay, we'll work on doing that, but I think the kids are right, and I'm glad we asked.
So, use benchmark testing to increase small group interventions for all students in the year. So we have Star Math highlighted up here, and we have the SRI test also. These two tests help implement strategies that the teachers can use in the classroom as far as tier-two and tier-three interventions. These tests take place three times over the course of the school year, so the fall, one mid-year, and one at the end of the year. And these are benchmarks that we can use to really provide students with efficient services. Talking about, one thing that we rolled out this year is, sixth grade has in-time, which is at the, so they have class, and then they go to lunch, and then they come back from class, and at that section of time, that's when our coaches are using the data from these tests to create small groups and support them mathematically, or if they need efficient reading skills. So, it's, it's little things like that, these tests are really providing for us, and they're able to support.
It's work that goes along with some of the data that we showed you at the beginning of this goal, which is looking for those students that have some areas of weakness or they're underperforming, and targeting them, like having specific, specific time, and knowing the specific kids, and what we can pull it together, and what we can give them that skill building. And we've been able to start doing that, we have to, we have to do more of that, we have to do more of that. I think the experience down at Plumis South Middle School is going to be easier than sixth grade, and we have to look for those opportunities in seventh and eighth grade as well, because as, as the number of full academic courses that they take changes from sixth to seventh, eighth, and the number of teachers, it becomes trickier to mine those opportunities, and so we have to, we have to continue to look for that, because it's really work that these folks are doing with those kids. And they, they want to do it, because they know that the need is there, but how do we do it across those schools? And that's, that's really the big question, so we have to continue to look at that.
Finally, we have collaborative time for teachers to use Panorama to track student trends, attendance, academics, and behavior. I think the key here is trends. This is the first year we've rolled out Panorama for our teachers, and last year, our guidance counselors received Panorama, and they're kind of helping facilitate the teachers in being more comfortable in using the strategies that Panorama offers, like such as generating small groups to kind of focus on some of those trends that just, don't get me wrong, Aspen's a fabulous program, but what it does is it takes that data that you can kind of lose sight of, and it color codes it, it puts it in a nice, friendly, like, makes it bigger, it just draws your eyes to areas that are concerned, and it's very helpful for, you know, when you're trying to create initiatives from interventions for students, what specifically this student needs, and the program actually has embedded in it an initiative that you can create and you can track. And it's been really helpful. We started, we knew that that had, that feature was coming, so we started with a paper initiative, a paper on interventions, and then now we've been rolling it out in Panorama, which has been very helpful.
Best summarize, I think it's this tool that allows us to pull information, student performance information from multiple sources in one place, and it's easy to read, and it is a tool, and it's used correctly, and I would say we're still in the infancy stages of this, because the teachers really did get the training this fall, and now it's just starting to become part of their practice. Talk about kids are slipping their practice, and we didn't know. This could be the answer to all that, if the teachers make part of their regular practice, and they look for those trends, the student has been a student a while, they're slipping in math, and we're gonna be looking... in math, and we're going to be learning. So, we are inundated with data, we're inundated with it, and sometimes it's easy to lose sight of those things, but we have this tool that allows us to sort of bring it all together, it's easy to read, and it's easy to manipulate. So, I think the hope here is that providing the teachers with the time to use that tool will hopefully head off, heads a bit off of the past, if we have students, so that maybe otherwise a potential could have gone along for, if you start to talk about that and continue to do it.
That brings us to nearly the conclusion of our presentation. There are outcomes that we're looking for, right? Our better attendance rate, because kids are going to feel more empowered to be in school, and they're going to connect with their teachers more. We're looking for more diverse learning experiences, increase parent and family engagement and involvement, for that family that has never come down to school, or come after the school, maybe they will once again. For a decrease in behavioral incidents, because the kids are feeling more empowered to have their more success in school. And I don't just mean academic, I mean associated, a reduction in student course failures, perhaps. Maybe we can tackle some of that as well. An increase in our passports, and upgrading our technology and our materials where we can, looking for those opportunities. One of the things that we are fortunate about down at self middle school is, because we have a little extra space, we're able to rent out some of that space and generate some building this way, and so we're probably getting back into school, which is great. It's rightening the place, it's making it more engaging. And this school's not doing it, it's 20 years old, things run, things get burnt out, and things get used, and so we're able to do some of that. That's the conclusion of our plan. If you have any questions, we're happy to field them.
Okay, first, let me say that you guys did a very good job of communicating to us what it's like to be a student in your school, from the social, emotional part, to the families, to the academic part, did a really good job. We got a good sense of that. Committee members with questions and comments? Ms. Badger.
I was just going to say basically the same thing that Dr. Sorensen did. So, thank you for sharing your, like, positive energy, and just exactly what happens in the school, because, I mean, it's nice to hear it. I'm so glad to hear that people are using the Panorama. I mean, we've heard so much about it, and it's nice to hear that you, you think it's going to be beneficial to the students, because, and this is the perfect age for it to be beneficial to the students. If you can catch them here, hopefully that sets them up for greater success in high school, so.
It is, and like, just saying, every one of these areas we're talking about, there's some improvement, like, even with Panorama, right? It's like any other new initiative, you have people that are early doctors, you're all in, and you have other people that are resistant, so it would be a whole concept, it's like, everybody needs to feel comfortable with this tool, and adopt it, and say, this is something that could really help us educate all of our students, and so that comes in time, like, that comes with comfort, and that comes with, like, providing an opportunity for people to use it. So, thank you, it was a time for it, we appreciate it.
And I was going to say, that was my next step, too, to say that I think it's really good that you have identified it, because that you need to do things slowly and get buy-in, because that's the most important thing. You get buy-in from the teachers, you get buy-in from the students, and the whole community is in on it. So, you know, you're set up for success, so thank you.
Ms. Hunt.
To add on to that, I think what really shows through, too, is that how much you care for the students, where you're asking the kids what they want, you're asking them if they want more field trips, you're asking the teachers if they want the posters in their room, and I think that that is kind of breaking through your presentation, as far as, you know, the real live concern for the kids and what they want. It's not just about the numbers and the grades, it's just about what they want, and what's best for them, and what will make them happy in your building, so I think that shows through.
Thank you. It's a lot, you know, it's a lot of work to do things that way, but I think it's the right way.
Absolutely.
Maybe to, like, you know, we ask a lot of the kids, we ask a lot of the teachers, and so, they need to be heard.
Yeah, absolutely. Student voice, teacher voice, it's really important.
There was, there was one piece of the data that was somewhat alarming to me, and I'm sure it was to you as well, and you probably can guess where I'm going. It was students with disabilities, and all of their scores, both math and English. Now, it's possible that the population is very small, so one student with bad grades will bring the whole thing down, but if the population is big, that's a real concern that those scores are so low then.
It's a concern. I couldn't agree with you more, right? Every, every school has its positives and negatives, or strengths and weaknesses, and that's why, you know, we're showing you that, because this is an area we need to be more working on.
So, we'll be looking forward to seeing those numbers change next time we come here. Well, that was a great presentation. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I can always have it. Anytime you want to give me one, I take one.
We will take a short break, though. Let's be back here at 20 after, take a finish on.
I'm good for you.
Take a five-minute break. Would you like to bring us back into order? Thank you for that small break. And now, we have to do some policy updates, Mr. Morgan.
Yes. We have some additional policies to review today. The first policy that we have is policy 6.5. It's a relatively short policy, permits public schools entrance age for kindergarten. Basically, one sentence, we had no changes, recommended.
Okay. Committee, regarding this policy, Ms. Hunt.
I move that we approve the recommended changes to policy 6.5.
Well, there were no changes, you approving policy.
Regulations at self.
Okay. Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Any questions on that? Okay, we can vote for that one. All right, that's passed. Mr. Morgan.
All right, thank you. The next policy we have is policy 6.6, entrance age for first grade, and that policy's a little bit longer, yet we also did not have any recommended changes for this policy.
Committee. Ms. Badger.
I move we approve this, sorry, my brain, policy for entrance into first grade, as presented.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by, Ms. Burgess is the second. Any questions to this policy? All right, and it's time to vote for it. That one is unanimous as well. And now, graduation 6.9. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, yes. Policy 6.9, Plymouth Public Schools', participation in graduation ceremony. Again, we had no recommended changes for this policy.
Ms. Burgess moves it. Is there a second? Ms. Hunt is the second. Questions? I just have one, and it's not in the verbiage, but it's the structure. There's a paragraph in this policy, you have A, B, and C, and then the paragraph after C, looks like it shouldn't be indented.
It's correct.
It shouldn't be part of number C.
That's correct.
All right, you'll move that over?
We'll shift that over, let's justify that.
Okay, other than that? Okay, anything else? Now, we can vote on it? And that is unanimous. And now, we go to fundraising activities, Ms. Morgan.
Okay, the fundraising activities policy, which is policy 9.1, there were no changes to this policy as well. We have been reviewing them, but it looks like we're not doing anything, but there was no recommended changes for this policy.
A little bit vetted recently.
Committee members. Ms. Burgess moves it, seconded by Ms. Hunt. Questions? I have one, Mr. Morgan. On 5.0, it says that, it talks about 5.0, it talks about, I'm bringing it up here, fundraising activities, upon conclusion of the fundraising, a summary of both gross and net receipts shall be forwarded. Shouldn't there be a timeline on that? Within 60 days, within 90 days, within the academic year? Shouldn't there be a number on that?
We certainly can do that. It actually happens regularly, so, I mean, more than once a month. So, that information that you receive for fundraising activities, which includes gross and net receipts as it's updated, is a continuous update to the building administration and to the superintendent's office. So, we certainly can add a timeline in there.
Well, if you don't believe it's necessary.
To ensure that that, well, we can do that to ensure that practice continues, if that's something that would be the...
I think sometimes, though, we do see that we don't get that information right away, or that the fundraiser was done months ago, and there isn't any, just occasionally, we do see that it is reported back, which might be what you're referring to.
Yeah, I wouldn't make it stringent, but I think there should be some sort of a timeline.
So, we do our practice in terms of receiving that information is within 30 days.
Thirty days.
So, that would probably, that would probably be my recommendation. The only, the only challenges we have are for fundraisers that may be done, say, for example, of the 99, or when we get sponsorship from an organization, and we're reliant upon their information, but standard practice is 30 days. It's been...
Well, I will go with whatever number you folks recommend, but I just think there should be some sort of guidelines. Ms. Badger.
I was just going to say, I thought that when we looked at the paperwork, and the paperwork, that there was a deadline on it.
30 days.
Yeah, so, it would just make sense for it to go in here, and if 30 days doesn't work for everything, then you just put 30 days, you know, unless, otherwise, you know, extenuating circumstances, or something like that.
So, with that, with that change, we can, we can vote on this motion? Everybody agreed? So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, we have a recommended change. With that change, anything else? All right, we can vote on it. And everybody voted in favor. And then, the last one is educational opportunities for foster care. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, hi. This policy's, policy 9.37, educational opportunities for children in foster care, and again, we did not have any recommended changes to this policy.
This is, I'm sorry, just to say that this is a new, this is a new policy.
This was a new policy.
So, with the Ever Student Succeeds Act, this is a requirement of all communities with the Massachusetts. This has been heavily vetted by a policy subcommittee in terms of the language and the recommendations from MASC, as well as the Ever Student Succeeds Act. So, this language is very specific to our obligations and responsibilities as school departments to support students in foster care placements.
Yeah.
Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the new policy 9.37 for educational opportunities for children in foster care.
Is there a second? Mr. Sally is the second. Are there any questions? Okay, we can vote on this. And everybody voted in favor. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Superintendent, search update, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, I have an update tonight. There are eight candidates that will be interviewed. I think you all have your schedule, but as of, there are eight candidates that have been selected, and the process will begin according to your calendar, so it will move quickly from this point, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there were some 30 candidates that applied?
Yeah, there were over 30 candidates that applied, and it's been whittled down to the eight that you will see.
Okay.
Just for the record, one of the candidates did not have a name.
One of the eight.
Okay, so then, that is, then there are seven, as Ms. Burgess had quoted.
She received an offer from another district in Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? Dr. Maestas, any questions to come on the committee? Okay. Is there anything from the all, all business that the committee wants to bring up? Okay, not seeing any hands. Is there anything from new business? Okay, not seeing any hands, moving along. Superintendent's report, Dr. Maestas.
Good evening, I have a few items to report on this evening. The first one is relative to infectious diseases, and I am, I'm going to be working on a document in the next week, and I'm going to be doing this in collaboration with superintendents in the, in the region, to prepare a document that gives a level of understanding and guidance to our schools around how we handle infectious diseases, including the coronavirus. I'm using a model that was developed by Jefferson County, Colorado, which was a very recent publication, and I believe it's outstanding, and I think it's something that would benefit our schools. But what I found very useful and helpful is, this document really, is really taking a look at a collaborative approach from school district to school district on how we would approach situations. So, I have reached out to my colleagues, superintendents, and we'll probably have about seven districts that will collaborate and actually work on producing this document. I anticipate a week and a half timeline that we'll get this thing out, but I think it's important that we have something that our principals can have available, our parents can have available, stakeholder, school committee can have available in the case, and questions are asked, we have a document and a guide to actually help us through some of these situations, and that, so, in a, in a sense of there's a level of consistency in how things are handled. So, that is forthcoming. I had a meeting with our chaperones today. I met with all our chaperones and advisors for trips that are scheduled to leave out of the country in April, and I had a meeting at 1:45, Dr. Campbell, Ms. Frye, Mr. Costin, they all went with me, and I got the, I got information that was relative to trips that were leaving the country this April. And what I've asked them all to do is go back to the organizations that are helping to arrange travel, to find out what commitments we have, what commitments we can look at changing, because I think it's in the best interest to take a look at how we can postpone travel out of the country. In addition, look at how we can work with the airlines, and also work with these organizations to actually be proactive and move some of these things in a timely manner. So, we have another meeting scheduled for Wednesday. They're going to go back and do some homework, come back, and my goal by Wednesday afternoon is to have guidance to every single trip advisor as to what we will be doing categorically with each, with each trip. I think it's important. I think our parents would like some information, they would want to know what we're doing. There's a great deal of pressure on our advisors on these trips, a lot of email from parents, are we going, are we not going, what's happening, what precautions are we taking? So, our direction at this point, and by having my team with me today, I think we try to pull out as much information as we could, so that they could then go back to these trip organizers, and, you know, a couple of these trips, we, they're homegrown, we've arranged them ourselves. So, you know, what responsibility do we have? Can we postpone? Can we offer a rebate to seniors that can't go? There's a variety of scenarios that we'll have, but the guidance that we'll have for the advisors is, we will have a combined response, that they will go back to each, each group and explain exactly what will happen with those particular trips. Keep in mind, I was very clear with our advisors that the Plymouth Public Schools is very interested in fostering a global education model, that we want our kids to be able to, to study and understand other cultures, but under the current conditions, we need to be responsible and take a look at what we need to do collectively to allow these trips to take a deep breath and figure out when the best time to go. And, and that's in the works, and I will share that information with the school committee as soon as it's known. I'll send it to you, Dr. Sorensen, and then I'll send it to the rest of the committee, so that you'll have an idea. At some point on Wednesday, probably later in the day, as we can, so we can get it processed in, in the electronic format, but I do want our families and our kids to know what's happening, keeping in mind that it's very difficult for a parent to tell their children they don't want them to go overseas. It's a lot easier for the school district to make that call, so, and that's, and that's my purpose. I really wanted to try to get some clarity on this. Yes, Ms. Burgess?
Does that affect anything with the 400th that we're doing?
Well, Ms. Burgess, that's a very good question, because we have six trips that were scheduled to depart. We also have a trip in May where we have students from England that are scheduled to come here for the 400th. So, we are working with our colleagues in Plymouth, England, to find out what their direction is. I mean, they have already purchased tickets. There, there is a trip to Lydon that was scheduled not for our kids to go to. There, there is a trip to Leiden that was scheduled not for our kids to go to, but an official commemoration, commemoration activity that Ms. Pecoraro is, is not going to be attending because the concern on that end. But we have a lot of events between now and next December that are filling the calendars.
The Japanese coming too in April?
The Japanese are scheduled to be here.
They're coming in April.
Yeah, they are scheduled to come.
Yeah, so it's.
And from my understanding, that is still happening.
Yeah.
Ms. Hunt.
So, there's a delegation of adults coming in April from Shishkama. We also got, I got an email from one of the parents, the, of a student that went this summer that said that they've been in regular contact with their host family in Shishkama and that, that Shishkama, they, the host family said they're requesting our prayers because stores are wiped out of toilet paper, paper towels, face masks, cleaning products, people are panicking, food supply is dwindling. So, I don't know if they're, you know, they just kind of ask that, we just think about them, even though it's not, you know, exactly where we think everything's coming from, they're being affected. I, I have a friend whose daughter teaches for the jet program and even though Japan isn't exactly it, her flight home is through South Korea, South Korea's closed, so she can't get home.
Yeah, and then Myuri that, that did her whole high school here, she, her, she goes home every July with her two kids and her father's also told her not to come this year, so that, yeah, so they're very concerned over there in different places.
I mean, even here, I, I tried to get Marley Clark's wife, she's, she had BJs and they don't have it.
Yeah, so.
Go on, Dr. Maestas.
Yeah, so, so that's, that, those are the two issues that we'll have some level of, of guidance on. I, I think these are, are important for our families, our kids. And again, I mean, a lot of work has gone into it. You've all approved these trips, you know.
Could you send us two things? The link to the Colorado program that you referenced earlier?
Yes, yes.
I'd like to read that. And could you send us a, a list of the six trips? Because I had somebody ask me about, and I didn't know what the trip was, so I couldn't even answer that question.
Yeah.
We can get that.
I think that would be helpful because I didn't know.
Okay. Yeah, and, and then, the last thing that I have is, is we are, and this is really precautionary and, but along the same theme, we're, we're going to institute a district-wide disinfecting program across all our buildings and that will be taking place. Mr. Montrong, we had a meeting this morning regarding that and that's something that we're going to be doing on a cycle basis to be able to add a level of protection, understanding that this is a flu season. It has been a heavy flu season.
Yes.
You know, there have been, as, as every year, we do have a wave. This year's been one of those more difficult years, but also during April vacation, we'll do a deep clean just to make sure that our, when the kids come back, that we'll, we'll have a, a nice clean building when they get back. But, but we'll take advantage of the time in, in April to do that. But, Dr. Sorensen, I just want to give an update on what we're thinking about here in, in my office. I will forward to the committee, the sample or the guide document that we use, of course, we'll update it, but keep in mind, the document that, that we will produce, my intent is to have the Department of Public Health review it. My intent is also have the Plymouth Board of Health review it and endorse it so that there's a level of understanding and, and I, and I, and I hope the, the other school districts that are, are partnering to, to roll this out, that they will have their local health agency review it to understand what they're signing up for because there, there are some commitments that communities need to do to ensure that the community's safe. So, I will forward that along and we'll go from there.
Okay. Ms. Badger.
As part of that document is, I just was listening to NPR or something like that, maybe today or yesterday, and they talked about how anybody creating a plan like this, it should also incorporate the ability for students to be able to do their education outside of the school.
And that, that is a completely separate document.
Okay.
That will be, you know, we, we have had those conversations as well and that's, that's a much heavier lift.
Yeah.
Because we have a, a pre-K through 12 model and actually, we have pre-K through age 20.
21.
22. Model, alternative education model. And, but you're absolutely right, Ms. Badger, the guidance is that, you know, districts consider how services would be rendered without the ability to have a face-to-face education. We, we have thought about that, we, that's a much heavier lift, but, yeah, but again, it's, it's one of the things that I think, you know, the, the collaborative of, of schools in this region would want to put their resource together, be able to help each other to have a level of integrity of, of the kind of education that we want to offer.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a point well taken.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Good report, thank you very much. Good, important information. Retirements?
Yes, I'll take that, Dr. Sorensen. Yes, it seems to be the theme of significant retirements these days. Maria DeSilva, English, is a second language teacher from Plymouth North High School. After 25 years, will be retiring.
On behalf of school, of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank Mr. Silva for her service and wish her a happy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. On reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt.
I don't have a, a proposal, but I haven't been here for the last two meetings, so I haven't been here since I went to DC, so I don't know if you want to put that on, on the agenda or you want me to report out on it on the next meeting. I'm not prepared to do it today.
Okay, we'll get it on the agenda. Let me know when you're ready.
Next meeting we'll be fine.
Did you get, put that on the, the agenda? Reports and proposals, Ms. Badger and I attended the second meeting of the Diversity Committee. That's moving along?
It's great.
Diversity.
Six.
Anything you want to report on that?
I, I just thought it was really wonderful that we had us, we had one recent grad, like we did the last time, and that we had a middle school student. I thought she brought a, just a, it was wonderful being able to interact with her and hear her perspective on it and I think, I hope that we have more of that and I think it's just a really wonderful group of people for a really, obviously a great cause and something that as a committee and as a district, I think we're all very committed to.
Do you want to add anything, Dr. Maestas, to the report?
We, we have, we are in the process of recruiting more students, but I think one of the things to keep in mind is this group is an indefinite group and we'll see people throughout the year cycle in and out, but I think students would be the constant, right? I think that should be the, yeah, their, their voice is important.
Hopefully we make the next one.
Great meeting.
Okay, anything else under, Ms. Badger?
I was just going to say that I don't know who, who, who had the opportunity to go to the No Place For Hate and League Women Voters. It's like unconscious bias informa- it was amazing and please, if you have a few hours to just pull it up on TV, it's going to be up on PAC TV soon and it is really worthwhile and something that I think everybody who's definitely on the Diversity Committee should take a few moments to watch. It was, it was great. We were really lucky to get the presenter, presenter that we did who is a descendant of, I can't remember which Mayflower person, but she is a descendant, so she, you know, brings it full circle, circle on this 400th year. Please do watch it, it's excellent.
Anything else under reports and proposals? All right. Personnel?
Yes, we have one certificated appointment, five coach advisor appointments, three classified appointments, three leave of absence and four resignations.
Okay. Any questions to Dr. Campbell? Okay.
I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant, number S030520, dated March 5, 2020, in the amount of $164,373.73 as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Is there a question? All right, we can vote on that one. Okay, that's passed and now the grants and revolving funds warrant.
Okay. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants and revolving funds warrant, number G030520, dated March 5, 2020, in the amount of $157,199.79 as presented.
There's the motion, is there a second? Ms. Burgess is the second. Is there a question? Seeing no hands, we can vote on the grants and revolving funds warrant. And everybody voted in favor of that, thank you. So, we have two sets of minutes tonight, January the 27th, executive session. What's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Burgess?
I move that.
Were you there at that meeting? January 27th?
I was there.
You were?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was, I read them.
Ms. Burgess moves that.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Hunt. Is there a question? Okay, we can vote for that. Go to the next.
That was my first reading back.
Okay, we have one abstention, everybody else in favor, and now we have the minutes of January the 27th. Ms. Hunt.
I move that we approve the minutes of Jan- January 27th as presented.
Seconded by Mr. Morgan, is there, is there, is there a question to these minutes? Okay, we can vote on them. We have one abstention, everybody else voted in favor, thank you. Is there any other business to come before the school committee tonight? I'm not seeing any hands, I will adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.